Let's call the meeting to order and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will begin tonight like we always do with public audience and Sean Ascom will be reading public audiences. A reminder to anyone watching, we're doing public audience like we always do, except we're asking you to email your comments to our town clerk Erica Butler. So in the future, her email address is ebutler@simsbury-CT.gov. So I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thanks Eric. And Eric and I had agreed to change off from time to time. So I'll read them this evening. So Board of Selectmen Meeting, May 11th, 2020. This was submitted by Joan Coe. This year will not be a referendum on the budget. It will be passed by the Board of Finance with an increase in spending and an increase in debt. The one-time revenues that the town received was used to manipulate the budget. Although there, there was discussion about the future financial costs associated with COVID-19 pandemic and the devastation to jobs and the economy, the Board of Finance decided to kick the can down the road with a business as usual budget with salary increases, increasing long-term expenditures. The budget as presented will only exacerbate the future budgets with hefty increases in taxes. Included in the budget was a new position for a deputy chief at a cost of $183,872 and a lieutenant position at an additional cost of $5,000. The Simsbury Police Union filed a grievance on behalf of Sergeant Trombley, who was fired by Chief Bolter for untruthfulness. There have been many hearings and briefings on the dismissal of Sergeant Trombley. The court actions will probably be finalized shortly with Sergeant Trombley being reinstated. The police union in, excuse me, November 2019 overwhelmingly voted no confidence in Chief Bolter. And a deputy chief will not negate the 80% vote of no confidence in the chief and will exacerbate the management issues. If it has found the grounds for Sergeant Trombley's dismissal, who was not only indefensible, but that Chief Bolter was untruthful and violated state statutes, this be ground, could be grounds for Chief Bolter's dismissal for just cause. Are the charges to the man- excuse me, are the changes to the management of the police department a bit premature? Jim Fleming has resigned from the police commission stating, "Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership and help resolving the latest issue with the ongoing dispute with the town manager concerning the authority of the Simsbury Police Commission. I believe in the rule of law and find this situation untenable. Effectively immediately, I resign my position as commissioner on the Simsbury Police Commission. Respectfully submitted, James Fleming." This letter is another reflection of Town Manager Maria Capriola's abuse of power. Simsbury remains the highest taxing- remains the highest taxing authority in the valley and will not be competitive in a depressed financial market. Property values will plummet and businesses will not be able to survive without higher taxes- or excuse me, with higher taxes. The challenges ahead are mind-boggling. On May 4th, 2020, the Board of Assessment Appeals met to discuss C-Tech Solar's claim that their property assessment on the solar panels on the International Skating Center of Connecticut, ISCC, were too high and should be depreciated. It is alleged the town manager Maria Capriola told the tax department not to collect any of the back taxes on C-Tech Solar account. C-Tech Solar owes the town $63,761.72. Why has Town Manager Maria Capriola interfered in the town's collection of taxes for C-Tech Solar? This appears to be an abuse of power. At the Public Safety Meeting, April 30th, 2020, Sean Ascom, Deputy First Selectman and Chairman of the Public Safety Meeting, became unhinged and used this meeting as a platform to publicly state that I was confused about social distancing at the Simsbury Golf Course when I was concerned about violations of COVID-19 violations on the Simsbury Golf Course and that I had time on my hands taking pictures on the parking lots at Simsbury Farms. During Sean Ascom's tirade on my concerns and confusion, I could hear Town Manager Maria Capriola laughing in the background. The only one that appears to be confused is egocentric Sean Ascom. Tom Tversky, Recreation Director, also told me that married couples can share a golf course cart. However, according to the CSGA Best Practices on Golf Course, it states, "We removed the allowance for couples and roommates from the original draft so that everyone when playing golf would have to play by the same standards and maybe in a small way would help reinforce good behavior. It has been our hope the couples will look at this as a way to set a good example." Maybe the more of us who see people doing it maintaining social distancing, the more the message is reinforced and put into practice everywhere, on and off the course. Maybe Sean Ascom should spend more time getting the facts instead of calling me confused with time on my hands. The collage I submitted, and hold on, I have to show the picture.
That's coming up, Sean.
Is it coming up? Melissa's got it? Okay. Just want to make sure we're doing this right.
Here you go.
So this is the picture. There are three pictures here. I have several golfers not conforming to social distancing. The other is an alleged married couple in a single cart. And the third shows two people need a knee in a golf cart. Luckily, I had time on my hands to document the violations with pictures taken at the Simsbury Golf Course. All of my comments will be posted at Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook.
Okay, thank you, Sean. We're going to move on to presentations tonight, and we have two. The first is the 350th Anniversary Proclamation, and we're going to get an update from the 350th Committee. So with everything going on in the world right now, it's easy to lose sight that tomorrow, May 12th, is actually a very, very special anniversary for Simsbury, that being the 350th. Many of us are wearing our home team attire. So, so thank you Cheryl for distributing those. I'm sure we'll talk in the presentation about how other people can obtain them. But really glad to be talking about this tonight. And we're going to be celebrating differently than we anticipated on a different schedule, but the celebration is going to happen. So let me turn it over to Cheryl Cook and Chris Barnett to walk us through the presentation.
Hi Eric, thank you for that introduction, and I'm so glad to see you all wearing your shirts. Chris and I have, you know, been banging our heads together, trying to figure out how we can reschedule all these wonderful events. And we have come up with the modified schedule, which you can see in front of you. I think it's the, let's see what slide we're on. So essentially, we're running July 20th to July 21. There are no scheduled events for July of 20. The events that will happen will be either virtual or socially distance events, such as chalk contests and coloring and, you know, different types of activities that kids can do at their homes. We can also have things that do not involve large gatherings. So Chris, I don't know if you want to jump in here about those type of events?
Well, we're working with some other organizations in town to do things that are family-friendly and inclusive, and all ages inclusive, so recognizing that people are trying to occupy their children's time right now. So we're doing some, coming up with some other creative ideas to do during July and August to keep all of us busy until we can do some gatherings together. And we will announce those on our Facebook page and our website as we finalize some of the details.
So the first large gathering that is still on the calendar is Simsbury Day September Fest. We have our own Tom Tversky here, who is part of the September Fest team and leading the efforts there. We all know that, you know, things change rapidly in this environment. And while we are hopeful that this event will be able to happen as it has been imagined, we realize that there may have to be changes made to this schedule also. Tom, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. We're eagerly awaiting the governor's guidance on May 20th for reopening to see if there's- the guidelines will stretch into the fall. At that point, as you've seen the news recently, there's been a lot of the, a lot of the longtime country fairs being canceled right now in the fall. The Woodstock Fair, the Hamburg Fair was canceled today. So we're looking for guidance for come September, but we're hopeful. We're still booking entertainment and activities, and we've got some civic groups in town who want to participate in the parade. But, and we've got a great fireworks show planned, but we're, we're waiting for that guidance that's going to tell us if we should keep pushing ahead with the planning for September or not.
Thank you. So Tom's team has been doing a great deal of work on this. So in anticipation that we might run into some scheduling changes, we have been discussing with the committee additional events that, such as events with the Historical Society and other types of events that are already on the calendar that we are hoping will be able to go forward later in the fall. So we are working with those groups now to move those events ahead. We also have our gala on the calendar for November 13th at the Riverview. We're hoping that that's late enough in the year so that we can have that wonderful event. And we are anticipating adding additional events over the winter season, which we did not know we were going to have a couple of months ago. And we're working with some wonderful local organizations such as youth hockey and, you know, the skating center and doing some additional work around winter events. We also have, we're still going to have our play and some indoor events, hopefully. So there are things on the calendar. We are hoping to do an official event that sort of replicates what we were hoping to have as our opening ceremony this coming weekend. Whether that happens in the fall at one of our partner events or in the spring at a new event is yet to be seen. We would like to do it in the fall, and that's what we're hoping for now. River Day has been postponed until June 26th of 2021. We anticipate that will be the last large event on the schedule. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you for this update. And I just want to, yeah, say obviously it's incredibly disappointing that we're not able to celebrate the way we had imagined, but I wanted to just acknowledge the work of all the volunteers on your committee, that many businesses and individuals who donated generously to make these events accessible to all of our residents. And also acknowledge Lisa, Kareem, and Tom Tversky, who've been supporting this work from town staff perspective. And I just wanted to acknowledge, this has been a year plus of work that's gone into this, and we are going to celebrate when it's safe and the time comes. So I just want to thank you.
Thanks Eric, we appreciate that. And we are not giving up on this. We are, we're still going to go forward.
Any questions anybody else had?
Eric, it's Mike Payne. I just want to thank everybody. Whoever would have thought even two months ago that we'd be where we are now and this would throw a monkey wrench into all your hard efforts, but thank you guys very much.
Can, is it appropriate for us to make a plug for the merchandise sales?
Oh, I was hoping you would.
And to unveil our commemorative piece that is coming out in a couple of weeks. I think there's a slide on that, Maria or Melissa, I'm not sure who's in charge of the screen sharing. But our merchandise can be purchased at simsberry350.com, which then eventually leads you to the Parks and Rec website where you can purchase merchandise. So we will be unveiling, well, we are unveiling right now, our commemorative medallion. It's going to be a limited edition medallion made of copper that will be added to our selections in July of 2020. And this is being produced by an artist, and I have to thank the Simsbury Grange for facilitating the making of this. It was their contact that was able to help us. I'd also like to note for people to take a look at Hot Meadow Street, our banners, our lining, the lamp posts as we speak with sponsors' names on it. And we'll have two large displays, which I think there's a picture of in one of the slides, at Bradley International Airport through July of 2021. So when people start flying again, they will get to see all the wonderful things that Simsbury has to offer. And our banner, which is at the bottom over Hot Meadow Street, will be up in June.
Oh, that's great.
I have a quick comment, if that's okay. I just want to say that I ran into one of our officers, police officers this week and noticed the really nice gold 350th logo on the, on the police cars. They looked really good, matched the lettering on the car, so.
Thanks Wendy. And if you get really close to them, you can see their commemorative badges for this year.
He showed it to me. He showed it to me, Chris.
I have a quick comment, guys. So Mike, I think we talked about this last, and Chris and Cheryl, yeah. I know you need more ideas, right? You want to hear from people who have great ideas, but don't help at all, right? That's classic. So I remember when I was a kid, Mike, was it the two, so what, was it the centennial of the, was it of the US Centennial? That we had the fire hydrants painted around town? What did that commemorate?
I believe it was a bicentennial for the country.
So that was kind of a neat thing. I know for a kid, from a kid's perspective, I mean, a huge, I don't know if they can do it now, you know, probably painting fire hydrants, but from a kid's perspective, I mean, that would be, that was an amazing thing to me, remembering back and to create a visual cue into what your program is. And then if you look behind Wendy over her shoulder, that I love Simsbury, that was on every single Volvo in town for years, wagon. I mean, that is classic swag to do promotion. So if you guys could ever reprint those with maybe the logo on or something, I know that I would be a big consumer of that and certainly.
Well, actually, Chris, actually, you have the ability to purchase an oval sticker, a 350th commemorative sticker to be, for $35 to be a patron, you can have the sticker on your car.
Well, I have it on my chest right now. This is my lockup. But I would love to have, like, that would be permanent, that I would have forever in the front of my car, just by thought, that's all.
We have it. So that is available.
We also are very lucky to have Vincent Sports Shop, who is willing to put our 350 logo on any pair, any piece of clothing that you wish. If you don't like the selection of shirts or hats or whatever it is that you see online, bring in your own hoodie or sweatshirt or whatever it is, and you can have it all personalized with the logo.
That's awesome.
Very cool.
Great. Well, I have a proclamation that I wanted to read and share. And this isn't what we typically do with proclamations, but I thought, given the very special circumstances, it would be nice if the entire Board of Selectmen wanted to sign it. So if we're supportive of that, I'll see if there's a motion. But here goes. Whereas the town of Simsbury, Connecticut, which was established on May 12th, 1670, as part of the colony of Connecticut, celebrates its 350th anniversary. And it's fitting to recognize the town on this special occasion and to applaud its past citizenship and distinguished history. And whereas today, the town covers nearly 35 square miles of natural beauty that's made up of four distinct communities operating as one, Simsbury, Tariffill, Wheatog, and West Simsbury. And whereas the town of Simsbury marks its 350th anniversary by celebrating its residents, volunteers, businesses, emergency workers, town staff, and elected officials who strive to preserve and enhance this community today and into the future. And whereas the town today is comprised of more than 24,000 residents who enjoy the many facilities and attractions Simsbury has to offer, including public parks, athletic fields, the Farmington River, the public library, extensive trails, and excellent schools. And whereas the town of Simsbury has many plans to celebrate its 350th anniversary with community-wide celebrations, historical reenactments, River Day, September Fest, and a formal gala organized by the dedicated volunteers of the Simsbury 350th Celebration Committee. Further, we acknowledge the generosity of dozens of businesses and individuals whose contributions have ensured that these events will be accessible to all our residents. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Simsbury recognizes this historic anniversary dated May 12th, 2020. Is there a motion to endorse this proclamation?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Jackie moved, Wendy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. So Cheryl and Chris, thank you so, so much for all of your work and for joining us tonight with an update. And we'll certainly have you back when there's more to share.
You're welcome. I know you have a sponsorship acceptance coming up on your agenda. And I'll get off, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank our sponsors again for their very generous support. And they have checked in with us and hung in with us, and they are all looking forward to this celebration moving forward at whatever speed and timeframe we can do. So thank you all for supporting that.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks Cheryl, Chris.
Thank you.
And just so we can get this proclamation up on social media tomorrow, to the Board of Selectmen, please send your e-signature to Tom Fitzgerald. If you just signed a white piece of paper, he can transpose it onto the proclamation. Great. Moving on to Presentation Two, which is our Library Fine Free Initiative. Rachel Gravel has an update on that.
Perfect. Thank you so much for having us tonight. It's great to be here. Thank you Melissa, too, for your help with the slides. Why don't we go ahead and pop right into that first one to start? So when we presented our proposal to you last year about going fine-free, we made our case we're going fine-free in the basis of its efficiency, efficacy, and ability to improve equal access to library materials. We're returning to you today to talk to you about our pilot, how it went, and to propose to you that you make it permanent for us. So I first want to show you quickly how this trend has grown from a trend to something that is a bit of a shift in the library world. So we'll show you some of the libraries that have adopted fine-free policies in the interim. Then we're going to look at some of the hard data to see, to measure how the pilot went. And we're also going to talk about the positive impacts, the things that don't come through in numbers, but the stories that are being told through our patrons and our staff, and then looking at the actual card use and the circulation. So if you could just flip to the next slide, please. Thank you. So just to show you that, you know, a lot more libraries have gone fine-free. This really is not simply a fad or a hot trend anymore, but it's really a fundamental shift in library services. Lisa, in her capacity as Connecticut Library Association President, was able to conduct a survey in the state this past year, and we found that there are dozens of libraries in the state even. And in fact, our neighbors are going increasingly fine-free as well. So Bloomfield is starting their program, actually last month, it is now in May. And Avon is actually thinking about going fine-free too. So you can see that there's a growing movement for sure. It's really, really changing how libraries are operating. We'll go to the next slide. So the big question though is, does it work? So why a lot of libraries are doing this? Does it actually work? The answer is yes. Our fine-free policies are indeed effective and efficient, as demonstrated by our returns data primarily. So as we anticipated and as we saw other libraries experience when they went fine-free, in our trial period, we observed a negligible drop in our average on-time return rate. So you can see we went from 95% of all of our materials being on time. And now we've dropped down to about 93% on average, looking at our whole collection. But on average, our materials continue to be returned over 10 days early. And on average, the, more of our materials are still coming back on time than in the consortium, and they're still returned a few days ahead of time as compared to the consortium. Next slide, please. Thank you. So if most of our materials were still returned mostly on time, what about those collections specifically that our patrons were worried about, like the new adult fiction, for instance, or those DVDs? And what happened with the things that we were actually still charging fines for? I think this is where it gets a little bit more interesting, because when you drill down into that aggregated average data and you start to examine some of our specific item types, as we thought, fines do not incentivize timely return of materials. In fact, our more popular materials, like adult fiction and DVDs, for instance, maintain excellent, if not better, return times, on-time return rates. While our finable materials that carry that hefty $1 a day fine, like our pronto's and library of things, those were actually returned much later on average. So we found and verified by looking at this very item-specific data that all of our hot ticket items, like the children's picture books, the new and old ones, new and old adult fiction, new and old large print, and new and old DVDs, all of those categories are not suffering significantly different overdue rates compared to our pre-fine situation. And interestingly, the items that do incur fines are among our most overdue items. And so that's going to include, of course, our pronto's, our board games, our grandparent kits. So arguably, we're just really hurting families with those kinds of fines. Next slide, we're ready for the next one. Thank you. And I know this question is quite important to the board, and it needs to be addressed in the time of tight budgets and uncertainties. The financial question is very important, obviously, too. So as you may know, library income historically wasn't totally separated out. We sort of had a bunch of money. But because of the fine-free process, we were able to update and streamline some of our administrative processes. And so part of that process was really getting a good handle on our administrative accounting and accurately accounting for all the monies coming through in the library. So this year, the library at large generated over $20,000 so far in revenue from various fees and charges, in spite of losing a portion of the fine revenue that we previously collected from circulation activities. So last year, we ended up collecting even less than fines than we had predicted in our March report to you. So we had projected about nine grands and took in about five grands in terms of fines. And that's because, as we had talked about, automatic renewals are just drastically reducing the number of overdue materials we have in the first place. And so those monies were already coming far down. And this year, we aimed up to make some of that difference up by becoming a passport acceptance site, a service that's steadily increased since the fall, and making gift receptacles available at our support desk. So library support jars, as we call them. And we even implemented a borrow a bag program in the library that allows folks to optionally purchase canvas bags. So while the amount of earnings was not exactly equal to past years in terms of the circulation-related income, I do want to note that we sustained moderate collections in the library support jar throughout the pilot program. So it was a consistent giving. And we do aim to grow those new services. And hopefully, once that passport program is even more fully off the ground, we anticipate more revenue coming in from that as well. Next slide, please. Furthermore, I'm happy to report that we had a very positive response to our trial. And I want to share with you some of those highlights. In terms of our new cards and library card use, we did see that we issued more new cards this year, particularly children's and teens cards. We saw an increase there. And the number of blocked patrons that we have at any given point has actually gone down compared to last year. And far fewer of those blocked patrons are children and teens, which is a really huge thing. To me, I think this indicates that it was likely fines and not fees, i.e. lost books before, that were blocking our young readers. As you might recall, it's sort of difficult from our data and the blocked patrons to understand which ones are fines and fees. But if you look at this, the data last year, about half of our blocked children were blocked because they had balances under $10 or $20. So balances between $10 and $20, we might just assume last year was probably fines. And this year, we made some, again, more changes, more streamlining and updates, where we've changed all of our items to cost $10. So effectively, what that means now is if you do not return an item, it gets billed to your account and it becomes a blocked account. So this year, blocked accounts essentially means unreturned books. And we can see that we've had fewer unreturned books and we have fewer blocked childrens and teens. And to me, that's, I think, one of the biggest successes that we've had. I also think this indicates that we're not seeing more or missing or unreturned materials than before. We still have the same sort of write-off rate as we did previously, meaning there, among those blocked cards, a bunch of those folks have cards that are older than a year. And it's the same, it's about a third of them, and that is always the case each year. So I don't think we've seen an increase in lost materials and missing materials. And furthermore, I think there's even evidence that we've brought some folks back. Comparing these lists of blocked patrons, March 2019 to 2020, there's an estimated of 20 or 200 patrons who are no longer blocked and have been using the library again. And so for me, that also seems to be a success. And we know that there are folks too who came back after a long period of time of not using the library. And then we're actually probably counted- And then we're actually probably counted in the new library issues instead of the returned users count, because they had been so along out of the system that we just created a new library card for them. Next slide, please. And also, we also sort of saw that a lot of libraries predicted, or rather witnessed increased circulation when they went fine free. We had hoped for that massive boost in our circ numbers, but we did have a few structural barriers this year. We had some major painting projects that brought down our stacks for quite a few weeks at a time. So, I think in light of those things, actually, our circ was quite high. And we did see some clear growth in some of the categories that we think are helping people, like the teen and business collection, for instance, showed some growth, as well as parts of the children's collection that are really supporting early and reluctant readers and parents, like the parenting collection and graphic novels and board books. Next slide, please. And additionally, in terms of our online collections, which require Simsbury Card, it cannot be, for instance, accidentally taken from the library without being counted and checked out. We saw a major boost in our downloadable and database-based use across most platforms and formats. And these are numbers, of course, before the quarantine. So, we're only seeing those numbers increase, of course. Next slide, please. So, as a librarian, I'm quite comforted by the structural soundness of this fine-free approach. But for me, the most compelling reasons for going fine free have always, you know, lied with our patrons and our services. Being fine free just plain helps our patrons and has completely transformed staff relationship with patrons at the desk. We have helped it, we've seen it connect people to the library again. And so, I wanted to share with you some of the stories that we heard. These are some of the comments that were received when we first implemented the approach. I think there were a lot of people who were interested in the concept, and the libraries are for everyone comment really got me, because that's the, that is the whole premise behind going fine free, to make it accessible for everyone. Next slide. We're especially grateful that the Board explicitly authorized a retroactive forgiveness of fees last year. So, I want to say very, thank you very much for that, because this story was really touching to me. A patron came in and was very apologetic about the large fine she had accrued from overdue items. She told me that she had been too embarrassed to come to the library because her fine was so large and had not been here in some time. She heard about our fine-free initiative and finally felt able to come back in and use the library again. She was extremely appreciative of the initiative. And that's, you know, just one story of the many that we've heard. Next slide, please. You know, for some folks, that being overdue and having that fine on their account can really carry some shame, as you can see. And it could have just been a rough patch. Somebody had, in this case, an extremely challenging two months. And we just, it's just, if you go to the next slide, it just feels so good to be able to help take this little bit of pressure off folks. For this person, it was $17, but it was a huge immensely helpful thing to them for to have one less thing to worry about. And that's, you know, if our books are all still coming back on time, then this is only a good thing, I think. Two more slides, one next one, please. And I, like I said, this is my story. This person, you know, came in one day and was, you know, lost. It hadn't been to the library in years, it was pretty obvious. And, you know, I approached him and he whispered to me that he, you know, he had some stuff on his account, he was, felt really bad about it, but he heard about the fine-free initiative and wanted to see what we could do. So, we started over and I, you know, we had a great conversation. He comes back, he's a great dude. But it just goes to show you that there are real people out there in the community that are truly hearing about this and are able to come back because of the fine-free initiative. Last slide, please. I just wanted to point out too, that should not say point zero or point zero and five, my fault. 15 cents, not fifteenth of a cent. I just wanted to point out that staff too have been really appreciative of this initiative, because it's made a palpable difference. You know, we're no longer fighting over 15 cents. We've made all sorts of administrative refreshments so that we're streamlining what we're doing and having fewer sort of closing out of the night activities, which is really helpful. And the next slide, please. So, we are very satisfied with the success of our trial from our perspective, and we hope our initial experience demonstrates that this is a change worth making permanent. So, I thank you for your consideration and am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Rachel. What questions are there? Wow, Rachel, you must have been thorough.
Very thorough, I guess.
You know, for anyone just tuning in, you know, this started with a white paper that Rachel wrote that was really excellent. I know it was presented to the library board and had a lot of support there and then came to the Board of Selectmen about a year ago. So, thank you for your advocacy and I can, it is so obvious, Rachel, that you just exude a passion for your job. And it was really fun to see that tonight. Lisa, is there anything that you wanted to add?
What I can add is that when we started off on this journey of becoming fine free, it was really about access for us as librarians. We have an excellent public library and we have members of our community that just were not taking advantage of all the resources that we had because they were embarrassed or because they couldn't afford to bring down their fines. And I think we've proven that they come back to the library when they're not hindered by those fines. And certainly, too, the number of blocked cards that were children and teens when we started this endeavor, and it's come down to 13%. I think that's amazing, because those are the primary people. You're creating learners for the rest of their lives.
Yeah, thank you. So, there is a motion in our packet, and if we're supportive, we can change this from being a pilot to something that's permanent. And I'll read that. Is there a motion, effective May 11, 2020, to authorize Simsbury Public Library to remain fine-free until revised or rescinded?
So moved.
Seconded.
Wendy moved, Chris seconded. Is there any further conversation?
Eric, this is Mike Payne. I still have a problem with this. I am bothered by the fact that we're coming in, we've already approved our budget to the extent that we could. And now that we've approved the budget, now this is coming in afterwards. It seems to be very well-received and maybe I've never thought I'd say this about myself, a curmudgeon, but I just do have a problem with this. But I'm fine being the odd man out. But I'm gonna vote against it, but it does seem to be very well-received and maybe I'm just out of step.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes five to one. Rachel and Lisa, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
We are going to move on to my first Selectmen's Report and then the Town Manager's Report. We just heard on May 12, 2020, which is tomorrow, is the 350th birthday of our town. And the amazing volunteers on our Simsbury 350th Celebration Committee have been working on four signature events to bring the community together around this very special anniversary. We heard that with social distancing in place, the decision was made to shift those events beginning July 1, 2020, going through July of 2021. Once those details have been finalized, we will have the full schedule and any updates at simsbury350.com. And I wanted to especially thank the businesses and the individuals who made generous donations that will allow these events to be accessible to all our residents. The town is also developing plans to reopen our buildings, parks, courts, and resume services that have been paused because of the COVID-19 pandemic. In our Town Manager Report that follows, Maria Capriola will share plans that are in place so far. Through this difficult spring, we've been committed to sharing information timely and widely, and that will continue as we develop plans to reopen. You can sign up to have news delivered directly to your inbox on the homepage of the town website. Click on News and Announcements. Our Public Safety Subcommittee continues to meet every Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. to share updates and coordinate resources. Those meetings can be streamed on simsburytv.org. And the May 7 meeting from last week is up there right now. Also, on May 7, we recorded our latest public service announcement, which can also be viewed on SCTV's website. It contains updates from our Town Manager, police and fire chiefs, and social services. Through all of our planning to reopen, we are doing so responsibly in close consultation with public health officials at the Farmington Valley Health District. In some cases, we're coordinating with our neighboring towns. Your health and safety is our top priority, and I've been impressed by the proactive planning and the collaboration taking place among our town staff and departments. I remind our residents that we must remain vigilant. This is not a time to let our guard down. Hundreds of Connecticut residents continued to test positive each day for COVID-19, and social distancing remains in effect. Masks must continue to be worn in many public places, and we need to continue to limit contact with people outside of our immediate household. I wanted to give an update now on the town budget. In the month of May, that's typically a time we go to the polls to vote on our budget. Per the Governor's Executive Order, a referendum will not be possible this spring. The Board of Finance is anticipated to pass the town budget at its meeting on May 19. The budget, as it currently stands, would result in a small mill rate decrease amounting to about $50 for the median valued home. The state has given towns the ability to adopt two tax deferment programs for taxes that are due July 1. The Board of Selectmen has approved both of those programs, and you can learn more about them and how to apply on the Tax Collector's website. Also, their phone number, I'll give that out, is 860-658-3238. Town Manager Maria Capriola's three-year contract expires at the end of January 2021. Ms. Capriola is Simsbury's first Town Manager since we transitioned to a new form of government. The Personnel Subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen has been tasked with making a recommendation on whether to extend her contract. At the Subcommittee's meeting on June 11, we'll be discussing our recommendation, and we encourage public participation in this process. We would like your thoughts, your feedback, and any input that you would like to provide. You can send an email to me before June 11, and I'll share your feedback with the Personnel Subcommittee. And I'll read your letter aloud at the meeting. Please indicate in your email, if you would like your letter read aloud. My email is ewellman@simsbury-CT.gov. My phone number is 860-658-3231. The other members of the Personnel Subcommittee are Sean Askam and Wendy McStudis. You can reach out to any of the three of us. Also excited to share that the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge will be planted in just a couple of weeks. There's an incredible group of volunteers who puts in many, many hours maintaining the flowers each summer. And the committee informed us recently that they do plan to plant around Memorial Day. So, that's my update, and I know Maria has quite a bit on the docket.
I do, thank you, Eric. A little bit of a long report tonight, but I'll do my best to move through it as quickly as possible. So, I'm going to start off with our coronavirus update. And to keep our residents and employees safe, our town buildings do remain closed at this time. We're doing our best to continue to operate by mail, by phone, virtually, through email. And one of the things I'm really proud of is staff continues to be creative, continues to develop additional online services, really to make sure that our essential services remain in place. And some examples have included online library programming, some virtual fitness classes. We're doing some residential and commercial, I'm sorry, residential building inspections virtually. So, again, just really want to commend and thank staff for their efforts to make sure that those essential services remain in place. Additionally, our infrastructure is being maintained and is fully operational. So, our sewer, parks, golf, public work screws have modified, work schedules, practices, et cetera. But that critical infrastructure is maintained and, again, is fully functional. Some good news to report, we do have two of our facilities that we have been able to reopen, but with modification. So, in consultation with our transfer station operator, we were able to fully provide all full services at the transfer station beginning this past Saturday. We had done a soft reopening last Wednesday with some limited services. But that's very good news. So, I know folks who were anxious to get rid of their brush can now do so again. We were also able, late Friday afternoon, to reopen our town and Board of Bad tennis courts. So, that was, again, a change at the state level where they were authorizing private clubs to reopen their outdoor courts, not their indoor courts, as long as they followed guidelines provided by the U.S. Tennis Association. So, we went slightly more restrictive, just again, to ensure the health and safety of our public. And our courts are now open to members of the same household for recreational play. Our playgrounds, our skate park, our basketball courts, they do remain closed to the public. Our trails, parks, and open space parcels do remain open for things like hiking, walking, cycling. We do ask that our patrons engage in social distancing practices when they are utilizing our parks. We've often, during this time, received inquiries from residents asking how they can donate and how they can help other residents. From a municipal perspective, one of the best ways that fellow residents can help us and help our residents in need is to donate to social services. They are accepting toiletries, non-perishable food items. They're accepting financial donations for our food programs. They're also accepting gift cards to grocery stores, gas stations, laundromats. So, those are all really terrific ways that people can help out our residents in need right now. Another thing I'd like to point out is that our social services staff is helping to coordinate both the making of face coverings as well as distributing those to members of the public. So far, we have received over 800 face covering donations from our residents. We're incredibly appreciative to our residents for that. So, any member of the public, if you're a resident, if you're a small business owner, if you need face coverings for yourself, your family, your employees, please don't hesitate, call Social Services at 658-3283, and we will connect you with some face coverings at no cost. I'd like to commend our Simsbury Main Street Partnership, our Chamber of Commerce, and our Business Resource Library, and Andrew Sherman. They continue to do an excellent job keeping our business community informed and assisting them during this crisis. The Main Street Partnership has also been maintaining a list of businesses that are open at shop-simsbury.com. Town staff, the Farmington Valley Health District and the Fire District are diligently working on guidelines for temporary outdoor seating for restaurants. Last week, the zoning commission did give staff the authority to do what's called an administrative approval for requests that we receive for permits for temporary outdoor dining. We hope that this will both help ease the burden on restaurants as they're trying to reopen and expedite the process for them. As Eric mentioned, we are making plans to phase in the reopening of our municipal facilities, services, and programs. Tendatively, we're looking at June 1 for doing more of some of these soft reopenings. We are working on those plans now. Later this evening, you will be hearing from Tom Tiberzki, a, again, very tentative plan for potentially reopening the pool for the 2020 season. We're also in the process of evaluating our summer camp program to see how we might be able to open that as well. One of the challenges that we have at the moment is there just isn't a lot of good information available to us yet in terms of state guidelines from either, you know, the Governor's Office or the State Department of Public Health. So, as Eric mentioned, we've been working closely with the Health District to get their advice on these matters. And for a number of our services, such as social services, libraries, recreation, we are consulting with our peer communities as well in the valley. We are also in the process of establishing a long-term recovery committee to help assist our businesses and residents with unmet needs in the coming months. This is something that we are being asked to do by the state. We will be identifying key participant and stakeholder groups to help participate in that committee. And we're very fortunate in that our EDC Chair and Vice Chair, Bob Crowther and Tom Earl, have agreed to serve as our recovery coordinators. They're just incredibly compassionate people, very talented, and really, really look forward to working with them in that capacity. And Andrew Sherman has agreed to help us staff that committee. And just lastly, I want to, on the coronavirus update, want to thank our dedicated team of elected officials, staff, our public safety partners, our emergency management officials, and last but not least, the Health District. Everybody has just been working so hard, again, to make sure essential services remain in place. So, I'm really grateful to the team and want to thank everybody for their good work. All right, on to department news and notes. For Culture Parks and Recreation, we have provided some additional information regarding the reopening of tennis courts within the Manager's Report. For those folks who are wondering about what those modified restrictions and practices are, and that information, again, is available in the report and on our website. Coming from the library, we're happy to announce that despite our current situation, we were still able to move forward with a number of internal promotions for some of our staff. So Zach Zukas has been promoted from full-time library services assistant to library technical assistant. He began working for the library in 2016 as a part-time staff member. He was recently promoted to a full-time position in 2018. And he currently holds a library technical assistant certificate from Capital Community College. So congratulations to Zach. Also, being promoted recently was Kathy Shanks. She was promoted from a part-time library services assistant position to a full-time library assistant position. And she joined our library team in 2018. She has a bachelor's degree in English from Skidmore College and a J.D. from New England Law. We are, again, really excited to be able to offer that promotion to Kathy. And lastly, our last promotion from the library is Erica and Lisa. I feel like I'm going to pronounce Erica's last name terribly. I'm gonna...
I believe it's Shu.
Thank you, Erica Shu. Thank you. Erica Shu has been promoted from a part-time library services assistant to a full-time library services assistant position in our library, in the children's department in particular. She began in a part-time capacity in 2018. She holds a bachelor's degree from Central Connecticut State University, and she's currently working on a master's degree in library and information sciences. So again, congratulations to all of those library staff members. From police, we have a few updates. One I wanted to provide to you all was that we did receive a favorable outcome for the town regarding an arbitration case we had. It was a unanimous panel decision. The arbitration case was, in fact, awarded, again, to the town. These cases have resulted from grievances filed by two of our employees who were issued written warnings for performance-related issues. The arbitration award is not yet posted on the SBMA website, but if you would like a copy, please let me know. And again, notable there was the unanimous panel decision. So typically with the SBMA process, you have a management panelist, you have a neutral, and you have a labor member. And this is a little unusual, and not all three panelists, again, unanimously ruled in our favor. So some good news to report there. Also from police, we have two new dispatchers that were starting with us this week. James Anino is coming to us. He had most recently worked as a paraprofessional with the Cromwell Board of Education for almost 20 years. He is also a member of the Cromwell Fire District. He has obtained over 100 college credits through Central Connecticut State University, and that is something he continues to pursue. We are really excited to have him join the team. The second new dispatcher is Kimberly Rathbun. She really has spent most of her life working in the healthcare field and emergency services. Most recently, she's been working as an emergency medical technician. And she has spent time doing college coursework at Syracuse University, Goodwin College, and Capital Community College. So also glad to welcome Kimberly to the team. So these two positions were due to one vacancy and one retirement. We really wanted to wish Jessica Puskowski well. She was a dispatcher with us for about six years. She recently became a mom and decided to stay home with her son for a period of time. So want to really, really wish her well and her new son well. And then the retirement was Mary Ann Sabido. Some of you may know her because she was with us for almost 24 years. She just destroyed her duties of care, compassion, and great dedication. She had a number of ancillary responsibilities within the department, including quality assurance reviews and helping us to implement services within the dispatch unit. She also served as the union president for many, many years. She always demonstrated a high level of professionalism in service. And again, we just really want to wish her well in her retirement. News from Public Works. You may notice that we have a lot of construction along Firetown Road again at the moment. So we do have a number of infrastructure repair work that's occurring there. We're doing some curb repairs, some catch basin work. We are replacing the sidewalk. We are also replacing all of the ramps on the sidewalks to make those ADA compliant. And last but not least, we will be paving. Aquarian is also doing some of their remaining utility work as well. The good news is that we do anticipate that this work will largely be complete by the first week or two in June. So we want to thank all the residents in that area for their incredible patience. This has been quite a project, but the area is just going to be much improved as a result of it. And last for this evening is a report from engineering. Some of you may know, but we do have a rehabilitation project for the Drake Hill Road Bridge. We'll also be resurfacing a portion of Riverside Road. This work is expected to be complete around August 6th. It's commencing this week. It will affect traffic in the area. At some points during repair work on the bridge, during the daytime hours, Monday through Friday, it'll be alternating one-way traffic and then reopened in the evening. So we just want to make sure that motorists using the area are aware of that, that they may expect delays. We've also done a mailing to the neighborhood just to raise their awareness about the project. But again, at the end of the project, we'll have much improved infrastructure in the area. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Maria.
Thank you.
Moving on to Selectmen Action. Item A is a donation from Big Y in support of the 350th Anniversary Celebration. Is there a motion effective May 11, 2020, to accept a $25,000 donation from Big Y to support the 350th Anniversary Celebration?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mike seconded. Any further conversation? Just a tremendous thank you. Very, very generous. Big Y is obviously going to be a Simsbury business later this year. So very, very grateful for that donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item B is a couple donations to our food programs. Is there a motion effective January 13, 2020, to accept a donation from Bill Garrity in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department food programs that assist residents in need?
So moved.
I'll second it with our thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Any further conversation? A big thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And... Oh, I lost my place. My apologies. Item C is a donation from Northwest Community Bank. So Northwest Community Bank is opening a branch in Simsbury in the former Santander location, right on the border of Avon. Looking forward to welcoming them in the fall, and they've generously offered to make a donation also to our food programs. Is there a motion effective May 11, 2020, to accept a donation from Northwest Community Bank in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department food programs that assist residents in need?
I'll make a motion.
I'll move that. Oh, I'll second it.
I heard. Okay, that moved. Mike seconded. Any further conversation? Just thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. While we're on this, I just wanted to ask Maria, just to underline. I know we continue, you know, continue to get asked by residents, you know, what do we need? How can they help? Maria, can you just talk a little bit about what kind of demand we've seen for our food services?
Yeah, absolutely. So in a normal month, we have about 80 households who are screened to participate in our monthly Oliver Cheese Day program. So that's a food program, and those eligible households can come. They receive fresh produce, meat, dairy, non-perishable items, and toiletries. During the crisis, we've had to increase the frequency of our distribution to about every two weeks. And we've been averaging about 100 households, up from 80. But our most recent distribution, we've seen even more increased need, and we had 111 households participate. So the demand is definitely increasing, both in frequency as well as volume. So this is, again, just an incredibly meaningful way that has tremendous impact to help our residents who are experiencing food insecurity that people can really, you know, just help contribute to help our fellow residents.
Right. Thanks, Maria. So the donations we're accepting tonight are really going right into these programs that are so very much in need.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you to everyone who's been making donations in support of our social services food programs. I'm switching gears a bit. Item D, this agenda item stems from a presentation that we heard at our April 6 meeting. At the time, we were joined by the Trust for Public Land, and we saw a PowerPoint presentation about possibly acquiring a 288 parcel on the north side of town referred to as Meadowwood. The Meadowwood project called for the construction of nearly 300 homes. And we learned earlier this year that there could be an opportunity for the town to acquire the parcel to be kept as open space, athletic fields, and even farmland. While the cost of the acquisition would be about $6 million, we anticipate that the town's share would be about $2.2 million. The rest covered with state grants. In your packets is a memorandum of understanding with the Trust for Public Lands. And if the board is supportive, we can authorize the town manager to sign it. The Trust for Public Lands would be providing technical support to assist with the acquisition. Maria, or anyone else on staff want to add anything?
Thank you, Eric. That's a great overview. I think the only thing that I would add is the second component. We would also be looking for a second motion from you all this evening, which would be a number of referrals to some of our land use agencies, our open space committee, and a few other committees that we felt would have a real interest in the project, such as the Culture Parks and Rec Commission and the Historic District Commission, given the significance of the time that MLK spent at the property.
Great, thank you. Are there, from the board, are there questions on this item?
Eric, Sean, just a comment. You know, I was on the board when we finished the Ethel Walker acquisition, and obviously, that was a proud moment for the community as we acquired that piece of open space. And we've, through public and private partnership, been involved in many others. You know, the Tuller Woodlot and others have been preserved through state, federal grants. And, you know, these are portions of our community that we now just take for granted, but, you know, they're just, they're always there. And there's been a lot of discussion about this parcel. This has been one of the most contentious pieces of land, I think, we've had in at least my lifetime with the turning down of this project originally, the litigation, the costs, the, you know, the challenges of losing that litigation and the resulting fees that we had to pay. This is a really interesting and, I think, rare opportunity for our community. You know, and I've seen our community pay almost 10 times as much for open space as what's before us today. And by no means do I think $2 million or $2.2 or the total price tag of six is inconsequential. I fully appreciate that it's large. Given the challenges of COVID and budgets and everything else, not lost on me that even more challenging right now. But these projects come around once in a lifetime, if we're that lucky. So this board, this community, the boards that we're going to refer this to potentially have an opportunity to change the landscape or preserve the landscape in this town for the next 350 years. And that doesn't come along very often. So I would encourage folks to, before they finally make up their mind, whether it's on our board or the Board of Finance or other places, to let this project see its way through the process. And let's gather the public input that I think is going to come. And if I'm betting correctly, this community is overwhelmingly going to support this. So just, again, not a question, I apologize, but some comments and some perspective from my chair.
Thanks, Sean. Does anything, anyone else want to add?
Couple of comments. Well, one of the questions is, when you say "technical", it's really looking into the financing and how to go about that. That's what I kind of gathered from the letter. And one concern that I just have, given the state of affairs, and I'm sure we'll find this out, but is the state going to start limiting grants that they give to the towns because of the financial impact of the COVID, the virus, that anyone has heard anything about? So...
Maria, would you like me to address that?
Yeah, JT, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. So thanks for having us again and entertaining these motions. Just to remind all of you, my name's JT Horn. I'm a senior project manager with the Trust for Public Land. And I've also asked my colleague Walker Holmes to join as well. She's our state director for the state of Connecticut. These are scary times, and I think it's a very fair question. What we have heard is that the state is planning to run their open space grant program as planned. They're delaying by a few months on some of the submission deadlines. They're giving us some slight extensions on submitting our appraisals. But the word that we're getting from Hartford is that they intend to move forward with business as usual on open space funding. Likewise, on federal funding, one of the pieces of funding we're intended to pursue is either a grant through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is what is represented in the slide deck that you've reviewed. We're also looking at an alternative through what's called the Highlands Conservation Act. And those are programs that, again, we believe will be stable-funded or even growing, partly as a part of the opportunity for a stimulus bill in Congress. And so our model here is to match the municipal funding with state funds and federal funds, and we believe that's absolutely still possible. It's not a done deal. There's a lot of uncertainty. But we believe this is a very compelling project and is still a very viable project.
Thank you. I saw Mike had come off of mute. Is there something you wanted to add, Mike?
I did, Eric. I think this is an opportunity. I'm not 100% behind it, but I'm way over 80%. But part of our process has to be, and I think needs to be, running it through the community boards and everything to see what the community truly wants. And if they do want it, and it is of benefit to the community, then I think people will step forward, much like we've heard some other people. But any of our endorsement of this is really, in my opinion, to put it before the public to get their feedback.
Yeah, I think that's important. This is the beginning of a long public process that will ultimately end with, you know, if it gets that far, with our voters.
Yep.
I saw Wendy. Did you want to add something?
I do. So I'm interested in pursuing the memorandum of understanding. I think that's a good first step. And one thing that I just have some concerns on is the courtesy giving, and this may be process-related, but at the May 17 meeting we had with the Board of Finance, this was a new item. They had not been presented with the plan and the details on the open space purchase. And I feel that by going to all the other boards first, without presenting formally to the Board of Finance, we may be missing a step here and giving them that courtesy. So I'm just looking to see if there's any guidance on that historically or, because I know, you know, that was something Rob had asked for at that meeting, to learn more about the process.
Yeah. This is Sean. Historically, in all due respect to our Board of Finance members, they are typically the last piece. They're never the first piece. You know, and again, we respected their request, Wendy, and pulled it from trying this year's budget. So it's not for their consideration at this point. So I think we did heed their advice. But this process always starts with us, and they are aware of it by virtue of, again, as everybody in town could be aware of through this public meeting. We don't ask for permission to spend the money upfront because we don't know what we're spending on yet, and there's so many details to work out. And if it's anything like the Ethel Walker property, I mean, that was broken up in, I think, the three or four different referendums, different votes. So this is, the Board of Finance will very much get a say in this process. And, but, you know, upfront, all it is is an FYI. There's nothing for them to act upon, approve, or disapprove at this point.
So you normally go to, we normally go to planning and all those boards to put in the effort to look into this before even bouncing it off the Board of Finance? That's how we've normally acted?
I mean, we bounced it off of my virtue. They're aware of it. But all we did was, I mean, all we did was give them a concept. Again, they can take their positions on it, but until we bring it and we... Again, they can, they can take their positions on it, but until we bring it and we decide whether we're going to send it to them, there's nothing for them to do.
Okay. Is, is that something, so we just want to keep pursuing this because I just got that feeling from that meeting, they wanted us to come to them. So
Yeah, we don't report to them though. We were, we report to the voters.
I get it. Um, okay. So you don't feel, we don't feel a need to present to the Board of Finance as a courtesy?
Right now, no. They need to be looped in. We need to be, we need to be sharing information with all boards, with all community members equally, not just the Board of Finance. Everybody needs to be looped in.
Can we add them on here as like, put them on an agenda to do a presentation if they would like one?
Maria, I think you want to say something?
Yeah. So one of the things that we did for a few boards that we thought would have a strong interest in that presentation we gave on April 6th, is we did do a reach out email in advance of your April 6th meeting, and the Board of Finance was one of those groups, just to let them know, hey, you know, we know you have an interest in Meadowwood. We're doing a pretty comprehensive presentation on this night at this time, you know, don't hesitate to watch live. So we did at least do our best to try again and get that sort of heads up to that particular board in advance of your presentation on April 6th. And I would just also, you know, remind members of the public who are really interested in it, it's all of those materials are in the April 6th packet. We did provide a number of them again in the packet this evening. And folks could always go back and watch that presentation through, through SCTV online so that that information is available.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Jackie?
I have a question for Maria and maybe JT about what Wendy had brought up with funding. So if the funds get shifted or we don't get some of the same money from the state, then we'll have a chance to reevaluate this?
Yes. So, so we're beginning essentially a process. We, the process begins with having reached an agreement with the landowner. And so once we had a signed contract with Griffin Industrial, the, the, the landowner, that they're willing to sell at a fixed price at a certain date, we can present the opportunity to you and we're going to present the opportunity to various state agencies and federal partners. And, and we have a funding plan and we need to now work on trying to execute each element of that funding plan. If something doesn't work, we will stay in communication with all of you and reevaluate. And, and this is a dynamic process. So we're beginning something that we have a, a plan that we think for 2.2 million dollars, the town of Simsbury can leverage outside funding and acquire a property that is worth well north of $6 million, but we have a signed contract at $6 million. But we have to go through a grant writing process, a fundraising process, and we would work in partnership with the town and that as the process unfolds and whether we're successful or less than successful, we will stay in communication. And so this is really the beginning, but the, the goal is, you know, to, to raise that full purchase price and the additional project costs. And we, we approach these things as a partnership. And so that's why we're beginning with the memorandum of understanding to outline roles and responsibilities. And we're beginning basically with a, with a concept that we will leverage your money on a, on a two to one basis. That's the idea here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chris?
Hey, okay. Hey guys, good evening. Mike and Sean, excellent points. Thank you for starting out the discussion in the way that you did. Couldn't, couldn't agree more. The Walker and JT, I, you don't know my mom, but you probably will come in contact with her in the next couple of months, I'm sure.
Bless you.
So I, I, I know that, and she's in North Carolina right now, probably watching this. I've just got to say this, just, you know, I don't get in trouble. But, um, so one of the dynamics that I think is, and I don't, I, I completely understand what, how the Board of Finance felt where they did recently, just because of all this kind of all these converging things are just tough to understand and work for. But so one of the common themes that we'll hear is we have binding challenges going for, we have debt challenges coming up. We, we all, we've had them and we will continue to have them. It's going to be considerable pressure, especially around education in this town. And in the timeframe that we're probably looking at this project, we will have to bond for a significant school project. And that number could be significant or it could be more than significant. Adding 2 million to it is, to some people, a rounding error, but to other people, it could be a challenge because we're talking about education, investing education for the growth of our town, and could this be a tax base issue for us? Could this project in the form of houses support that education funding going forward? So as part of your dynamic presentations, as it works through the boards, I would always encourage you, please to add as much narrative into relative to that developed land in the form of housing and the strain on education versus the form that it is now is open space in consideration that we are about to invest a significant amount of money to build more schools, to handle more residents, the residents we have now and the residents that could potentially be coming in the future. So how does those converging dynamics blend together or not as part of your narrative? So, so encourage that to be part of the discussion going forward as education. And it may not be true, but I think some people could hear that and get more in line with some of where our, our board thinking is around the dynamics of the, the project.
Yeah, Chris, that, thank you for the heads up on that. One of the things that the Trust for Public Land brings is expertise in real estate transactions, but we also have a whole conservation economics team. And so that team can be brought in to help town of Simsbury think through challenges around cost of community services, you know, what is adding 300 houses due to enrollment in the schools, you know, police and fire and transportation budgets? You know, and we can do that kind of analysis in partnership with the town. In general, what we have found is that putting land into conservation saves on a cost of community services basis versus residential development for single family homes that, you know, you avoid building the new school or expanding the fire department or, you know, all of those other community services that open space acres are generally cheaper than residential acres. But we really have to do that work and we would have to, you know, if that was one of the questions the town wanted us to address, we would be happy to bring our team in and help the town think through those sorts of trade offs because they're complicated and it's, it's a time when budgets are constrained and we're very sympathetic to the, to the people who are trying to balance the community's budget. So we're, we're happy to help. We're here to partner and, and questions like that are very fair, fair, and we're happy to help address them.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, if I could. And to build upon Chris's point, JT, you know, we do have a, as you're well aware of, a, a history of acquisition in this town, the Hudson property most recently. And I think we paid several hundred thousand dollars basically for a house. And, you know, so my point of raising that is that the Walker Hudson, the other ones, the, the, the relativity of what we're getting versus what we're spending, it's kind of been all over the place. But again, doing the quick math in my head, this is probably one of the cheapest, I think, acquisitions this community will do when you, when you step back and look at it on a comparative basis. So again, I'm not sitting here saying I'm going to, you know, everybody's going to approve it tonight, but I think when, when we step back and look at that relativity as well, in conjunction with all the other, the, all the other things that Chris and others have raised, I think that'll be an important point too. And Wendy, the reason I brought the Hudson up is again, to hopefully help your, your concerns. The Board of Selectmen initiated that process. We had to do so quietly, much like we, we had to here due to contracts and negotiation. And again, you can't, you can't tell the newspaper that we're negotiating with a buyer because then that can challenge the deal, right? The Board of Finance chairman was given a heads up at the time, much like this process. But the details of the project couldn't be disclosed, obviously. As that project came out, the Board of Finance was aware of it. The Board of Selectmen ultimately approved a concept, a plan in concept, and it was brought over to the Board of Finance for the funding piece of it and the presentation was made in addition to not only the acquisition of the, the Hudson house, but also the demolition and then potential park renovation cost as well. So that was a little bit quicker of a timeline, but your point is right in that we do need to bring the Board of Finance in, but that would, I guess, be an example that I would show you where they weren't brought in on the front end, they were made aware of it. And then once it was time to talk about the financing, specifically, that's when they came in.
Thank you.
Thanks for the history, Sean. It's helpful. Anybody else from the board? Have any questions? Great. So I'll see if there's a motion May 11th, 2020, to authorize the town manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Trust for Public Lands concerning technical assistance related to the potential Meadowwood open space acquisition.
Move that.
Okay.
Chris seconded. Any further conversation? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And this next motion, effective May 11th, 2020, would refer the potential acquisition of Meadowwood by the town of Simsbury to the Open Space Committee, Planning Commission, Conservation Commission, Zoning Commission, Historic District Commission, and Culture Parks and Rec Commission for comment on proposed purchase of open space.
So much.
Second.
Okay, Sean moved. Wendy seconded. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. JT and Walker, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. May I just add one quick other point?
Of course.
So one of the other resolutions that we'd like the board to consider or the town boards to consider is that part of our agreement with the landowner is that while we have signed a long-term option with them to give us time to go through this community process and to do the fundraising, they would like to have the, the various town boards consider a permit extension that's equal to the amount of time that we have for our contract. So I've talked offline with Mike as planning director and with Maria. At the appropriate moment, we think the landowner will come forward with a request for permit extensions. And it's just, it's an important thing for us to keep the landowner at the table. And so that would be another motion that I think we'd, we'd ask you to consider at some point in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Good night. Thank you. Item E is a request to waive fees for temporary outdoor dining. So a little bit of context on this issue. On May 20th, restaurants may be able to begin to allow outdoor dining. And we anticipate that there are many restaurants in town that will be interested in developing temporary outdoor spaces that may be larger than what they currently allow. Last week, the zoning commission elected to authorize staff to issue the necessary permits that really expedites the process for these businesses, many of which are struggling. And we've also gotten a request to waive the $25 permit fee. Mike Liddon or Maria, is there anything that either of you wanted to add on this item?
So you have a request to waive the administrative zoning permits, but we also put the request in order to waive any building permit fees associated with individuals that are going to pursue this temporary outdoor dining. And it's really, it's an attempt to give the restaurants that support and lifeline, because what we're hearing is they really need that extra help. So.
Yep, thank you. And this would be again, waiving the, waiving the fees at least through, through September 30th. So through this critical period of time. Sounds extremely reasonable to me, anything that we can do to, to, to help these businesses as, as they, as they love to stay on their feet during this challenging time. Are there any, any thoughts or questions that any board members had on this item?
I'm in favor of giving anything that will help our small businesses.
100%? Okay. Is there a motion effective May 11th, 2020, to waive administrative zoning and building permit fees through September 30th, 2020 for restaurants seeking approval for temporary outdoor dining?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Wendy moved, Mike seconded.
I didn't move, Jackie did.
Oh, oh, you know what's funny? I looked at Jackie and I called her Wendy.
I was looking at Jackie, so.
Is there any further conversation?
What am I, Chuck Liver?
I see you too.
I'm sorry to scare you.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Again, a tremendous shout out to to our Main Street Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce that have done an amazing job. You know, the Board of Selectmen funds a large part of the Main Street Partnership to the tune of $45,000 to $50,000 a year. And during this critical period, we, we are really seeing what, what, what we're getting for that money and it's an incredible value in my opinion. I just wanted to really call that out. Item I almost skipped you, Amy. Item F is the Budget Status Report. That's something that we do quarterly. So this is the Budget Status Report for the first quarter of the year.
You probably could have skipped me because most of you guys were on the Board of Finance call, so you guys are all going to have to hear it again. But I'll try to stick to the highlights and make it brief. If you could just scroll down to the revenues, Melissa, thanks. So starting with the general fund, if you scroll down towards the bottom. Keep going. There you go, thanks. So starting with the general fund revenues, you can see there, we're currently at 97% of the budget. So about $98 million compared to our budget of $101 million. And if you scroll up, Melissa, to where it says Tax Department. So just a couple of the highlights, if you see our Tax Department, we're already at 100% of the budget. We're actually a little bit over. Budget variance of $206,000 to the good. So that's good news as of March 31st, that we're already where we're supposed to be as far as tax collection goes. If you look down a couple of lines below that where it says Finance Department, you will see that our actual is 1.7 million and our budget variance is about 1.1 million. So just to give you a little reminder on this, the majority of this, $1,021,000 is related to our bond premium for our fiscal year 20 issuance. This issuance was the first half of our Henry James project that we went out and bonded for. So there's a large variance there. If you go down to where it says Town Clerk and you look over to, all the way to the right, where it's, yep, one more. Where it says 172,852. So this is the variance, the increase this year compared to last year. And the majority of this is related to a large fee of about $100,000 that was received from the sale of the Simsbury Commons property. And don't think that there was anything else major on revenues. If you go to expenditures on the general fund, if you go all the way down to the bottom, you'll see that we're currently at 73% of the budget. So being March 31st, pretty much right where we're supposed to be. If you scroll all the way down, keep going, Melissa. Keep going. There you go.
And Amy, that's because this is actually our third quarter, right?
Right. If you scroll a little bit up, Melissa, I just want to see that education there too. There you go. So in comparison to the same period last year, you can see that there's about $1.3 million in excess expenditures this year compared to last year. That's not entirely true. If you look up where you see the Board of Education, you'll see in comparison to last year, we're up about $1.5 million. But that's actually just due to the increased budget that they had from fiscal year 19 compared to fiscal year 20. If you look at the percent of budget, they're only at 74%. So it's not like they're at 90% and they're showing $1.5 million increase. They're right where they're supposed to be. The only issue I'm going to touch on for the expenditures in the general fund is our legal expenditures. This is the only area where we expect to go over budget, mainly related to the labor and employment legal services. We had originally budgeted $40,000. And we're expected to be at about $160,000 as of June 30th, which will exceed our budgetary estimates by about $120,000. And then just a high level touch on where we are with COVID in the general fund. So we have had several COVID-related expenditures. We've also seen some COVID-related revenue losses. However, however, due to increased tax collections, permit fees, the collections from the tax collects fund, indicating that through end of year end, we'll probably see revenues in excess of expenditures of about $290,000. So knock on wood, we have not been Um, so knock on wood, we have not been impacted to the extent that we could have in the general fund thus far. And this also does not include our bond premium or any use of reserve. So we shouldn't have to use any reserves that were planned for this year. And we should be able to transfer out our bond premium to be used to offset future debt. Questions on the general fund? Go down to the Simsbury Farms Fund. Want to go all the way down to the bottom, Melissa? Thanks. So as you can see, um, as of March 31st, we have an ending fund balance of about $180,000 and a net change in fund balance of $126,000. So as you remember from the last two reports, um, we have deferred revenue that was recorded last year that's going to impact this year. So if we were looking at this fund comparing apples to apples, um, March 31st, 2020 compared to March 31st, 2019, that $126,000 would actually be a loss of about $117,000. So a loss of $117,000, still better than the loss last year at this time of $424,000. So the main drivers to the decrease in the loss is from the golf revenue, which as you can see is up about $158,000. And then the increased $80,000 transfer from the general fund into this fund. Through year end, um, if we don't see, if the golf budget comes in within budget and there's no additional revenues and our expenditures come in on target, we'll probably see a $70,000 deficit in this fund. Um, however, you all will be having a discussion later on with, um, the Parks and Rec Director related to the pool and the fees, um, opening the pool, things of that nature that will affect these estimates. So I won't get too far into that. Any question on the Parks and Rec Fund? Okay. We can go down to the Health Insurance Fund. All the way to the bottom. Okay. Um, so as you can see, as of March 31st, we had net change in fund balance of about $880,000. Um, I don't know if you recall, but during this budgeting process, we had made the health insurance solvent without increasing our contribution to fund balance. So we increased our premium so that the fund would get zero. And then the contribution to fund balance actually came in from the general fund of that $850,000. Had we not taken in that $850,000, you can see we'd have a net change in fund balance by about $30,000, which, um, not ideal, but since that's how we planned it with the budget, we're actually right where we anticipated we would be. Um, if you look at the total reserve, we're currently at 3.1 million. So our target is to be at 20% to 25% of expected claims. And currently, we're at 21% of expected claims. So we're still within that target. And then just, um, related to COVID on this fund, um, the last quarter, we typically see our most increased claims. The high deductible plans that, um, the individuals that have met their deductible, they're 100% covered at this point. And so they typically, um, use this time to book as many pre-care appointments as they can, um, and use that, um, the health plan where they don't have to use their own funds. However, with the COVID, there's been a lot of doctors' offices that have been closed to routine appointments. Um, they've only been taking emergencies. And then, of course, we don't know the impact yet related to, um, any employees or their family members affected by COVID and what that's going to do to our claims. Um, we should be getting our claims report hopefully within the next couple of weeks um, so that we can, um, get some estimates related to that. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, I think the only other thing is the Sewer Use Fund. You scroll all the way to the bottom of that. Um, so here, as of March 31st, we have, um, a net increase in fund balance of almost 1.2 million. But if you can, um, take a look up in the revenues, you can see that our revenues are actually already at 99% of budget. Um, we've already collected the majority of our assessments and fees. And our expenditures are only at 65% of budget. So this one point, almost 1.2 million will decrease as the year goes on and our expenditures catch up to our revenues. And that is all I have for highlights. If somebody has any questions, I can answer those as well.
Any questions for Amy?
Just a comment that Amy did a great job kind of going through the, the, the deeper details on the COVID potential, uh, challenges for the budget at the Board of Finance meeting, so. Appreciate that.
Just a question I have, uh, it may be too early, but I imagine that the, so one of the programs, the tax deferral programs that the Board of Selectmen passed requires an application that, uh, that the town started accepting on May 1st. I don't know if it was too early, but I'm wondering if that could serve as a barometer for, for, you know, revenue loss due to COVID and if there's anything you can comment on at this point.
Sure. Um, so I'm not really sure. Uh, a lot of the, our tax collector expects that the majority of the applications are going to come in probably after the tax bills go out. But we have received several applications to date. I think we have two pending for proof of residency and we've approved 14. And, um, compared to last year, since we don't have this year's bills out, it's about $120,000 in deferred revenue as of today, actually.
Okay. Any other questions for Amy? Great, thanks. Thanks very much for the reporting. Um, item G is a revised resolution to extend the budget process timeframe. Um, so earlier this year, the Board of Selectmen voted to extend, uh, our budget adoption timeframe. And at that time, we had still hoped to hold a referendum. But as time gone, has gone on, it's clear that that wasn't going to be possible because of social distancing. So in your packets is a revised resolution that is similar to the one that we approved previously, but it more accurately reflects the dates associated with our budget process. Um, Maria, before we move forward with that, is there anything you wanted to add on this item?
Just on you. Uh, no, I think that covers it well.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion effective May 11th, 2020, to adopt the attached resolution modifying the timeframes associated with the fiscal year, uh, 2021 budget development process and authorizing the Board of Finance to adopt the final budget in accordance with the Executive Order Number 7I?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mike seconded. Uh, any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Item H, uh, so last week, the Board of Finance, uh, held the second of two, uh, public hearings on the budget. And the final budget adoption is scheduled for May 19th by the Board of Finance. The steps we're asked to take tonight are to adopt the same resolutions pertaining to the operating and the capital budgets and to approve the, uh, budget adoption questions and then set the adoption date. Uh, are there any questions on this item before I read a rather lengthy resolution? Okay. Uh, so, uh, be resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of $24,104,638. Be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of $72,309,61. Be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of sewer use fund, sewer treatment plant, residential rental properties, Simsbury Farms special programs, non-public schools, debt, retirement, capital, and capital non-recurring annual budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of $12,429,922. In accordance with Executive Order Number 7I and the resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen on April 6th, 2020, and amended on May 11th, 2020, the recommended budgets will be submitted to the Board of Finance for adoption. Questions for budget adoption by the Board of Finance? One, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, be approved and implemented in the amount of $24,104,638? Number two, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, be approved and implemented in the amount of $72,309,61? Number three, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Sewer Use Fund, Sewer Treatment Plant, Residential Rental Properties, Simsbury Farms, Special Programs, Non-public Schools, Debt Retirement slash Capital, and Capital Non-Recurring Annual Budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, be approved and implemented in the amount of $12,429,922? Um, is there a motion to, uh, adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Also, is there a motion, uh, to set the date of, uh, Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 for budget adoption by the Board of Finance?
Make a motion?
Second.
Okay, I heard Wendy and then Mike seconded.
No, it's Jackie.
I, I don't have anyone's picture in front of me. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Um, item I, um, this is the annual budget mailer. In the past, uh,
I'm so sorry. Um, you know, we talked earlier today. I missed this page number. This, just one additional page, uh, the one that's labeled Resolutions of the Board of Finance, Resolutions of the Board of Selectmen, just this one pager. Uh, we do need, um, someone from the board to read. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem.
Thanks, thanks.
All right, um, resolved.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing that it says the Board of Finance recommends. If you could just change that to the Board of Selectmen.
You got it. Uh, resolved upon motion duly made. Seconded and adopted, the reading into the minutes of the full text of the, uh, resolution set out below is waived. Uh, copies of the resolutions haven't been made available, uh, to those in attendance and recorded in these, uh, records immediately preceding these minutes. Uh, resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommends and approves the following. Uh, general purpose projects, radio system upgrade, uh, $1,202,000. Uh, greenway improvements, cash, $135,000. Highway pavement management, uh, bonding, uh, $605,000, cash, $200,000. And Losip grant, $156,500. Town aid road grant, $243,500. Uh, sidewalk reconstruction, uh, $200,000. Various drainage improvements, $125,000. Wing plow truck, uh, town aid road grant, $258,000. Uh, public works facility paving and storm drainage, $330,000. Uh, sewer use fund, cash, secondary clarifier weir covers, $275,000. Let's scroll down a little bit. Uh, school projects, uh, paid for with bonds, district network infrastructure at half a million dollars. Uh, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mike moved. I heard Chris Peterson second. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Okay. Moving on to the budget mailer. Um, so this is an item, um, that typically the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed have issued jointly in past years. Um, this typically occurs prior to the referendum taking place. Since there will unfortunately be no referendum this year, our thought was to send the budget mailer out after the Board of Finance adopts the budget. This would be on top of the, uh, the mailer, uh, that went out about a month ago, before the Board of Finance public hearing. Um, so I wanted to see if there were any comments or feedback on the proposed mailer that's in your packet. Okay. I, for some reason, um, don't have the motion in front of me, but I'm gonna, uh, do my best. Is there a motion, uh, effective, uh, May 11th, 2020, to, oh, there it is. To authorize the issuance of the fiscal year, uh, 2021 budget mailer as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Um, item J, uh, is a, uh, proposal to, uh, potentially open, uh, the Simsbury Farms pool in the, uh, 2020 season. Um, obviously, uh, because of COVID-19, uh, the, um, the plan would have to be modified. So I'm hoping that, uh, Tom could talk through the, um, plan that you've developed with your staff. And obviously, the, the guidelines aren't even out yet, so that could further change. Um, but I'd love to better understand the plan and also the associated, um, costs um, with, with opening the pool and being able to allow fewer people in it.
Sure. Eric, thanks for the time. Um, we, we thought a lot about this. We've been talking to our colleagues in the field and, uh, we, we spoke with the Health Department a few times as well. Uh, nobody's, nobody's made a statement from outside of the town yet on, on whether we can operate these pools. As of last week, when we were putting this packet together, um, just on, late on Friday afternoon, the CDC came down, uh, with recommendations for aquatics programs this summer um, and laying out the guidelines, many of which are in the plan that, that we've come up with, uh, that we're presenting to you. Uh, so what it basically says from the CDC is they're passing it off to the local health districts, um, to make their own decisions, but they're, they've given a set of, of guidelines to follow. What they haven't given us is a, is a number, um, you know, number of people per, per, per pool or per, per space on the pool deck, um, other than trying to maintain a six-foot distance at this point. Um, but what we've, when we've done a lot of thinking about this, we're, we did a worst-case scenario that we would have to operate at about a third to half of our regular day-to-day capacity, which we estimated to be about 150 people on the pool deck at any one time. Um, we looked at swim lessons, um, could we do swim lessons if we spaced them out in the pool? Reduce the numbers per class going out at the same time. And we came out with about half the number of lessons that we could, half the number of people in lessons that we can normally do. Um, so we've tried to, you know, tried to creatively problem solve this is how do we get, you know, we, I likely it'll be the hottest summer ever, the way 2020 is going. So, uh, we tried to creatively think of how could we get people in the pool, uh, and still do this safely. Uh, so what we, what we came up with is that we would still try to do, uh, a swim team program if it's offered. We set aside the time for that in the morning, uh, followed by a brief, a two-hour period of swim lessons, which is a little bit less than we normally do. I'm gonna get less people in the pool at the same time, um, and then a lap swim. And then we get into what typically, we run a public swim from 1 to 8 o'clock on weekdays at Simsbury Farms. Well, that's an awful long time. And if we limited it to 150 people, that first 150 people to get in the pool, uh, could potentially stay there the whole day and keep everybody else from getting out. Uh, but then we run into, leaving it that way as we normally did, the first 150 people to get there, we run into the Walmart problem. Uh, we have, you know, five in, five out, you know, however it could work. We don't want people waiting out in the sun. We don't want people bringing their families to Simsbury Farms and not being able to get in. So thinking more about that, we decided to do two, three-hour public swims, uh, each, each day, Monday through Friday and the weekends. And what we would do is we would do a pre-registration process that, for that, uh, 150 spots. That's the number we use the day before. So people would use our website. They would register online for that, uh, for that, for their spot. Um, for the first, let's say, 24 hours of that period that, that the time is open, our passholders would be able to register for those to reserve a spot in that 150-person session. Uh, any spots that are left over the next morning would be opened up to someone who doesn't have a season pass, uh, doesn't have a season pass. What, what the benefits of this is it restricts, it automatically restricts our number of people that we can, that we decide can be on our pool deck at any one time or in the area. Uh, it keeps people from coming to the pool who haven't, who won't be able to get in the door. Um, so you know before you go, basically. Uh, it allows us to go pay it free onsite as well because everything would be coming through the, coming through our, uh, website. Uh, and it gives us a class list as well. So we, so if we have to do any contact tracing. And it gives us a class list as well, so if we have to do any contact tracing, we have the names of the people who are in, in any particular session, as well as their contact information and what time they checked in. So we would have all of that information should we ever have to go back and use it. We've adjusted our guard schedule to account for social distancing and a lower number of people on the deck. And again, we're waiting for the Public Health Department to come down and say, this is what you're allowed to do, this is when you can do it. We've estimated June 20th, about two weeks later than the start of our normal swim season. So about June 20th is what we're thinking we might be able to do. Now, the announcement coming out May 20th will have a lot, a heavy impact on that, whether we can, what are the gathering sizes we're allowed to do? That's what we're really looking for with the Health Department to kind of come in, the Department of Public Health or the state, to come in and give us some guidance on that. We've talked to some other towns, we think this plan will work as far as what we're doing, and other towns are gonna be modeling, I think, off of what we've already come up with. I know Avon's waiting to hear what we're doing, and I've talked to some other people in the state, and they think we've got something that they could model in their own communities. But it does come with a heavy cost. Right now, worst-case scenario in your packet, we estimate a potential subsidy needed of $100,000. That does not count the administrative staff costs that we have, my portion of my salary that comes through the Recreation Fund, as well as the full-time rec supervisor who's 100% in there, and our administrative secretary who's partially in there as well. What I've given you in your packet originally was the lifeguard seasonal staff cost. In your cover memo, I accounted for our maintenance cost, the chlorine, the electricity, the supplies, lifeguard supplies, bathing suits, that kind of thing that were needed. In your packet, the spreadsheet that I referenced, I gave you a number of proposed revenue of 60, I'm sorry, what is it? Looking at my sheet here, about 65,000 plus some concession money. We think we could rate, that's bottom lines, cutting our season pass cost in half, in our daily admission price from what was previously approved down to $3 per person. I formulated two different scenarios, we could increase that season pass number to 95, or up to 120 for the family of four. If we go to the 120, we can generate another $30,000 in revenue to close that gap somewhat, and that gap will narrow from the projected $100,000 excluding staff costs down to the neighborhood of 50 to 60, also adjusting some of our expenses downward as well, having more time to look at it. But I want to be transparent that there will be some kind of subsidy needed if we don't have the ability to run our pool as we normally would.
Hey, Tom, quick question. This is Sean, on the 100,000, just help me with the math, so the staff cost is part of it, and then you're saying the chlorine and there's other costs in there?
For the nine to 10-week season, I estimate with some savings here and cutting some things back on staff and with less people, I estimate it to be about 147,000 and change, somewhere in that neighborhood. But, you know, again, it's a moving target as far as what the date could be, what our restriction on numbers could be, but if we go into that 150, 200-person range per day, or per swim session, I'm sorry, and we're allowed to do less, do half of our lessons, I think the expenses would be about 150, a little less than 150,000. Now, we can generate money through season pass sales if we choose to do that, daily admissions, if we, if we're able to go up to, say, 200 people, we can go up to 50% of our daily admissions on the average day last year. So we could take it from, say, $3 a person and bringing in 4,300 to, say, four or five, and getting it up to about 14,000 just on that number. So we've looked at, you know, I've looked at it a couple of different ways, there's no way just to, you know, wave a magic wand and get it to zero or that gain. But if the town, you know, right now, the pool operation sits in that revenue fund that, you know, we have this discussion every year, whether it's a park or a public service, and, you know, at this point, what do we want to do for our constituency this summer? Do we want to offer this service if we're able to at a loss, or do we not? Now, the one thing I took out of all these revenue projections was non-resident fees. My feeling, and I'm not sure if you agree, but that if we're limited in capacity, heavily, you know, to a third or half of what we normally would, I would, my feeling would be we only offer this service to residents and not non-residents. I would grandfather in the four or five families who are non-resident, who have bought non-resident passes to date, I think it'd be fair to bring them in since they've already purchased their passes, but I'll leave that up to, you know, your discretion as well. But we didn't account for non-resident. Typically, our non-resident fees are more than our non-resident fees for the pool are more than our resident fees, so we could increase the revenue projection as more if we allow non-residents to purchase passes and/or daily admissions. But again, I think with the number, what we're estimating between 150 and 200 people, do we, I don't want to be turning residents away at the door this summer if we've let non-residents in, that's my feeling.
Yeah.
And I think this summer, we're just operating a little bit differently than we normally would. Normally, we'd welcome everybody up there, but I think we're trying to be as fair as possible.
That makes sense. So I'm just confused, though. So the numbers you're rattling off are not what I'm looking at from the packet, so Melissa, do we have, or does...
I have, I redid those this afternoon, or the last couple of days since the packet was sent out.
Was that in the updated packet? Yeah, I'm with Sean, scrolling through here, but it wasn't the latest packet that went out then.
It was not, I was working on this all day today, so that's...
Oh, I saw you at Fitzgerald's.
Almost all day.
The man's gotta eat.
Almost all day.
He had a box of cookies! He wasn't eating, he had literally a box of cookies.
We all have our, we all have our things. So stick with me on the finances, so Tom, at the end of the day, just round numbers for me to keep it simple. 150,000 projected expenses, and the prior sheet had 73,000 in revenue, so that's, so, I mean, 75 still right?
That...
Again, ballpark, not gonna hold you to this.
Yeah, that previous number didn't include the, I've trimmed these expenses down more since I've had about another five days to work on this.
Okay, that's fine.
I think we've got the expenses down to about a little less than 150, again, about a nine, maybe 10-week season. And again, I would recommend, you guys don't have the, you have the pass rates set at 75, I would recommend going up to 95 or 120 for the family of four. We were selling it for $145 prior to May 31st, that's what you had previously approved and 200 after May 31st. I say wipe away the post-May 31st, since people are still holding off, waiting to see what we're doing before buying their pass, but I would raise that number from 75 up to close that gap a little bit more.
Okay. So, might be a hard question, but let's say we don't open it, we're still at a deficit for the pool, because we still have to clean it, we still have to maintain it, so there's fixed cost up there, whether we open it or not, right?
If we close the pool, we're not gonna be putting chlorine in it, we would just leave it where it is, it's winterized right now, we would leave it where it is. If we, if we open it, yes, there are, there's cost for chlorine, there's cost for electricity, whether we, the costs are relatively the same, whether we have 75 people in the pool or 300, we're adding a couple lifeguards, but other than that, all the fixed costs are there.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess what I'm getting at is, is we still have to pay the electricity, whether it's winterized or it's summerized, there's still an electricity bill up there, there's still the staff cost you referenced before.
Yeah, the administrative staff cost only, and whatever building electricity we run for our workstations.
And I'm not trying to make this rosy, but I guess that shouldn't count, and appreciate you being transparent with, from what I look at, that's a fixed cost as a result of this building, we don't, that's not part of the conversation, you know, we do do that. So we're looking at somewhere between 50 and $100,000 when the smoke clears here.
Yes.
Again, I'm being rosy with 50, I'm being pessimistic with 100, it depends on, it depends on so many damn different things. But then there's the cost of health, and we're not gonna compromise there, right? As you said here, the State, everyone, we open only if that's a go, this is just, again, to provide a respite for our residents, right? A place much like my house, where everybody's going crazy, we're looking at the same four walls all day long. So, I mean, that's really what it is, and I don't think we can necessarily put a price tag on that. Now, $100,000 to respect to our Board of Finance, and obviously to us, I get it, that's a lot of money, but there's a balance here, again, too, can we help our community out in another way? This is, I guess, the way I'm looking at this.
I have a few comments, is it time for comments?
Please, Wendy.
Yeah, so I've been like, this thing has been, I've had a lot of angst over the whole pool, like I've talked to some people, and I ran into Tom, and I'm not, I can't just look at it financially, I mean, I maybe, maybe I'm supposed to be looking at it financially, but I can't look at it just in that sense, I'm looking at it as all the questions that every parent would have, and every, and I know that's your job, but every employee and their parents' concerns of, do I want my kid to even work at the pool, do I want my kid policing the pool? Also knowing that we don't know the state yet, or, you know, you're still waiting for guidance from the state, and we may know more on May 20th. I'm just wondering, why do we have to vote on this tonight, and we couldn't push it off till our next meeting, which is May 27th, when we may know more? And, you know, could do some more modeling as we learn stuff, or other pools open, other pools don't open? I've been researching towns, not necessarily in Connecticut, but, you know, in Pennsylvania not opening, this one is pushing it off till May 30th to make a decision. So is there a need that we have to do this tonight?
I don't think we're looking, well...
Because it reads that we want to open the pool, it doesn't read that we may open the pool.
I think, I think what we're trying to do is get a recommendation that we can open the pool, knowing that we're gonna have a loss, because it's, you know, we're constantly being watched for the health of the revenue fund, and it's not gonna be any better this summer. At least likely, we're gonna be canceling many of our sport camps and enrichment camps, but as the pool's concerned, we have to set up trainings, we have to order supplies, we have to, there's gonna be a significant amount of PPE that's needed if we're gonna go ahead and open, obviously lifeguard suits, trainings. We need to get the paperwork for the staff, you know, get the staff in and get them hired. There's a lot of planning that goes in this, we have to update these, there's gonna be about two or 300 individual transactions for refunds that we're gonna have to do for season passes, to get them down to whatever the lower number is, or cancel them totally. And then we want to be able to resell and start to train people on what our processes are gonna be for the summer, and we need to have the okay to go ahead and start refining some of these processes as far as our sanitation schedules. It's just, it's gonna be very, very difficult if we wait till June 1st or June 5th to flip a switch and have that pool open for June 20th. Even the maintenance of the pool, there's about a four-week process to drain the pool, repaint it, get everything ready to get going again, to have that water ready for June 20th, that's the day we open. If you tell me we're not gonna open till July, till 4th or July weekend, then we've probably bought ourselves another week or two before we have to make this decision.
Just, just a couple, if you're looking for, you asked for, you said directionally, this is what you're looking for tonight, my indication would be directionally yes, because you need some sort of guidance, guidepost from us. So I would be voting yes to push forward, understanding that there are going to be some guideposts here around what the level of subsidization is. You know, we, yes, we need to be sensitive to the fact that the farm's complex aspects of it have been, no pun intended, you know, kicked around like a ball in conversations around subsidies, but it's never really been about the pool directly, if I'm correct. And Sean, your point, you know, it is mine, right? It is mine, but to me, we're talking, we potentially are talking about an investment in health, is the way I look at it, because we're such, as a society, as a community, you're dealing with anxiety, we're dealing with lack of motion, we're dealing lack of socializing, whichever it is. The answer of whether or not it'll be safe to open the pool is not, will be taken out of our hands, we won't make any, we won't take action if it's not, right? So that question's already answered, let's understand that. But you think about health and activity, you think about skill, life skills, learning to swim, when you think about the ability for people to be, have at least some idea of someplace potentially safe to go when it's okay to leave their home, those are investments in health, nothing more, nothing other than just mental health, which I think is critical for all of us at this time. So for those reasons alone, I think it's an investment that I would be certainly in support of, so directionally, yes. Understanding that at some point, we'll have to have a hard number, we may have to take a reversal on that, so that's where I stand.
Eric, can I ask a procedural question here? Because I think we need clarity for all the board members. We're not considering opening or closing the pool, we're being asked to change the fees, correct? Because jurisdictionally, it's Maria's decision to open the pool or not, we can pass, I mean, we might have authority under an ordinance somewhere to shut them down, but we don't vote to open or close a pool at this point, right?
Okay.
So Sean, I was actually looking for two things this evening. One would be to update the fee schedule, and to fees that we felt were more appropriate since the pool wouldn't be open as much to folks. The second piece, which I was a little less comfortable with, I mean, to your point, technically, yes, to open or close the pool would be my call, but I thought that this was a little different, is because of the nature of the revenue fund, and if we are able to open for the 2020, you know, pool season, and after doing our analysis, we were looking at a pretty significant deficit. And so kind of going into the pool season, knowing that we would be operating in a deficit, really wanting to consult with you all from a policy perspective, if there would be a tolerance for running the pool with a deficit. You know, if it was, say, maybe negligible, like a few thousand dollars, probably not so concerned about it, but when we're looking somewhere at the range of maybe say 50 to 100, that's more substantial. So really hoping to just kind of, again, get some, I think, policy guidance and direction from you all, potentially the Board of Finance as well, in terms of comfort level for running the season, again, potentially, because ultimately, we may not even be able to do the pool season, but if we are, is there a comfort level for doing that with a deficit?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. I guess, just from my simple head, if we agree to amend the fee schedule, we've essentially agreed to a deficit, is kind of the way I'm looking at it, because right now, the fees are the fees, and they have to be charged the way they were approved. So you guys can open the pool at those fees whenever, you know, it's safe to do so, unless we come back here and pass a resolution saying you can't open the pool, right? Which we would have to do under one of our ordinances, with under the parks and everything else. And again, don't look into it, but again, we don't vote every year to open or close our facilities, we vote on the fee schedule. So I get, I get that you're looking for guidance on the deficit, but I guess if I'm gonna vote yes or no on the fees, I'm either agreeing to a substantial deficit or not, because the fees originally were approved for that fund to break even, was the theory, right?
Right, exactly.
Any deviation at this point, we're accepting a loss or assuming a loss will come in, is the way I look at it. Now, we could say no to the change, and that could, then you decide not to open the pool as a result of it, but I'm not trying to, there's no blame here or anything else, but it's just, it's important procedurally, we're not voting as a board to open the pool tonight, Wendy, so you're right, you know, I hear your point, but from a, do we have a tolerance to go to the Board of Finance and explain to them, hey, we just put, we just put $100,000 of the taxpayers' money into the pool? And, you know, this is funny, because we don't need their permission for it, because we approve the fees, right?
Yeah, that's true, you all do approve the fees, you know, I think, you know, again, our thought was is that we would present this concept to them, though, at their next meeting, just to make sure that they're informed and they have a heads up, and that there's some sort of comfort level from them as well. Unfortunately, that they are meeting next Tuesday, I believe, the 19th, so they're meeting soon.
Yeah, and again, I'm not suggesting we try to go around them, but again, this isn't informational, but I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we get back, cool, how are you gonna pay for it? So we might want to be thinking about that, and perhaps we can agree to the fee schedule here, with the understanding that we need some work at year-end transfers or otherwise, or to fill in that gap, you know, if the rest of us are comfortable with this. But, you know, as Maria said, we're basically looking, are we gonna endorse a $50,000 to $100,000 known loss in a trade-off for, if some of us agree that, as Chris said, for mental health and family health and other things?
But can we, I mean, basically, can we afford that? I mean, is that doable? What are we not gonna do or get because we do this?
It depends on, I mean, it depends on how you look at it, we, you know, with the 98.5% collection, if we collect 100%, we put $1 million in the bank every year, so this choose, so we put $90,000 in the bank, but if COVID hits us and we need that, but then we got 16% reserves, you know, a bunch of building permits came in, we went a couple of tax appeals, I mean, there's so many ways to look at this. So, I mean, the basic answer is yeah, we can afford it, should we spend $100,000 on it or not? Yeah, we each have to answer that individually, it's more of a, are we agreeing to an additional expenditure that wasn't budgeted for?
Yeah.
Eric, can I jump in?
Eric, can I jump in? Um, here, here, here are my thoughts. I'm a little uncomfortable increasing our deficit. On the other hand, to Chris's point, I think mental health is a big deal. And I think giving people somewhere to go is a good thing. Um, I also take the perspective that while it's Maria's job to approve the opening of the farms, we're going to get a lot of guidance from Farmington Valley Health District. And I am, I will tell you, my personal experience with them is over the last few weeks, they have been phenomenal with digging down into the details and then helping us at, at work and, and with a bunch of, uh, uh, issues. And I'm, I'm very comfortable that they will continue to, to help us get through this. Because ultimately, we need the health district to approve, probably the, the farms even to open. Um, so I'm, I'm generally in favor of this. I like Tom's ideas, uh, about raising the fees a little bit, about out of town families kind of going, uh, by the wayside this year, other than the people who have already purchased them. I think that's reasonable. And these are extraordinary times. So, you know, I, I'm sure we can find the money somewhere.
Thanks, Mike. Um, I'll share my thoughts and I honestly, I really struggled with this over the weekend. Um, I have a lot of respect, Tom, for the, uh, the creativity of you and your staff. And it sounds like we're a pioneer in the Farmington Valley in this regard. Um, I, you know, I've done some very unscientific polling and I think that there would be support for keeping, um, keeping the fees somewhere close to where they are. I think our fees as they are right now are, are a value.
I agree.
So, so I think that's something I would encourage you to consider. As far as the fifty thousand, hundred thousand dollar deficit, I know, I know we can, we'll find the money. Um, I, I'm honest, I'd really like to hear the conversation because I can't decide whether, whether it's worth it to have that boost, uh, for the community. And, you know, my family, as much as anyone, wants to get out of the house. Um, so I get it. This is a tough decision.
Amy, you had a point on the passes before.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, and I don't want to put Tom on the spot, but if you all don't approve the fee schedule and then Maria decides not to open the pool, we're going to have to refund all, all of the aquatics passes that we sold. And Tom can correct me. I just remember we had a brief conversation about this, um, yesterday or last week. And, um, so in addition to the fixed costs related to the pool, which would be minimal, we'd, we'd still have to take a loss in the fund for the revenue that we'd have to give back.
Yeah, and, and pretty much all of the past revenue we're taking in now is paying, is paying the bills in the fiscal year that we spent all our money in, in expenses last summer. As you know, we kind of take in the, we take in the summer and then get it back in the spring. So it's going to be in this fiscal year that we would see the biggest loss. Next year, fiscal year twenty-one would, would actually be better than what this fiscal year, fiscal year is, even if we closed the pool, because we wouldn't have that. Um, it would have given away all the revenue we normally take in, in this fiscal year. So, uh, to offset the lifeguard expenses from last summer.
So how many passes, you said three hundred were sold already?
It's quite a bit. I don't know. I don't know what the exact, I don't know the exact number of. We're talking thousands and thousands of dollars, uh, tens of thousands of dollars in past revenue at this point.
Yeah.
And so it said, like Eric, did you, you said, um, if we could try to keep the fees, I, I mean, the seventy-five, you, you changed from that seventy-five dollar, Tom, to, yes, it's hot.
The number, the number I suggested earlier, I, I have a ninety-five, I, I can give you a numbers for ninety-five dollars and up to a hundred and twenty. The pass is currently being sold, a family of four resident pass at this moment is currently being sold for a hundred and forty-five dollars. We thought it would be best because we're restricting the amount of hours somebody can come. We're making it more restrictive for them to come, because they have to register a day ahead of time to come, you know, to let us know that they want to come and reserve their spot, that it would be fair to prorate that pass somewhat. So we were playing with the numbers original, and then a shorter season on top of it. So we were playing with the numbers to get to seventy-five. Then I did a, I did a projection at ninety-five and I did a projection of that of a hundred and twenty. And those, those revenue projections that I did were at seventy-five percent of the pass holders we had last year. Um, thinking that there's some people who just won't buy, you know, they're making, they're making a choice whether they think it's, it's a safe activity for themselves and their family. Um, we did our daily admission projections at twenty-five percent of what we did last year for the, based on a four-year average. Again, I think if we're, if we think we could get up to two hundred people in there, it'd be safe to move that, that revenue, um, that daily average up to fifty percent of the capacity. Maybe, maybe either we limit the number of pass holders per day. I'm not in favor of that. Uh, and then leave the rest open for daily admission. I think we should accommodate the pass holders as much as we can, as we have in the past. Um, but again, I think I, I would be, after looking at the numbers more closely, amenable to doing a hundred and twenty dollar season pass for family of four, uh, sixty dollar individual pass, a twenty dollar additional family member pass and a forty dollar senior pass with a five dollar daily admission instead of three. Um, and again, these are all residents only.
Well, the, the one thing I would say though, if you're, if people, like you're trying to reduce the cost to the person, but it's, um, a benefit to everybody to have the pool open and to pay even a little less than they paid, but to still pay, you know, not a total prorated, because you're going to be at the pool with less people and you're paying for your safety, because all the extra work that you guys are going to have to do to keep the pool open. So I feel like if you can keep the fees a little higher and make the, the loss less, right? I think that would be a reasonable thing to, to provide to the, to the town.
Yeah, I mean, there would be a lot of customer service question, I'm sorry, a, a lot of customer service questions from why they're getting less and paying the same and or more. Uh, we're restricting that number to, to three hour swim instead of some families typically coming at one and sitting there for four or five hours. We would also have to be taking out the inner tubes that are normally there, the, the pool noodles, probably the lounge chairs. This is going to be kind of a bare bones, you know, uh, operation. We're putting the pool out there and you bring your own, you know, you bring your own chairs, everything. It's not going to be the country club atmosphere we normally provide.
I, I agree, but you're, you're starting from the wrong base, Tom. And in, in macroeconomics, it's always supply and demand, right? And there's scarcity of resource here. So there are alternate.
He froze.
Just when it was one of Sean's sermons.
It was a really good point too.
You want to hear an amen?
If I can, um, finish his point, I think he's saying that there may be an appetite to pay a little bit more.
I agree.
A little bit less.
And Eric, can I chime in on what you had said? I think at this moment, to have something that is a bright spot in people's day by opening the pool, I think that's one way to look at it. And again, like Tom said, maybe offering it primarily to our residents. I think that's something we really need to think about.
Yeah. Let me, um, thank you, Jackie. Let me, um, ask this as a way of moving forward. I'm hearing that there is directional support for opening the pool and, uh, and possibly revising the fee schedule. Do you think it would work if, uh, if Tom and his team continued the work, um, for another couple of weeks? At that point, we may learn more from the health district, will likely have, uh, some, some better assumptions uh, around the revenue. And then we could formally approve the fee schedule at our next meeting. Um, what's people's comfort level? And I also want to hear from Tom and make sure that would work operationally.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, Maria and, and Amy, would we have to go before the Board of Finance after that Board of Selectment meeting? Because now we'd be into June, correct?
Um, I'm not sure if we would have to, if you wanted to bring it up at the next Board of Finance meeting. And, um, but if we had to wait until the next one, it'd be June sixteenth. So I know that would be too late.
But remember, you don't need their approval.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I think if we were to, um, at least do the informational presentation to them at the next meeting, you know, and we could say that, you know, we're receiving directional support from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, you know, we're leaning towards the revised fee schedule that Tom, um, you know, detailed out this evening. We could put that down on paper for them, um, and then come back to you hopefully again with more information on the twenty-seventh, uh, with that revised fee schedule. And Eric, if you think there's value in it, do you want to have Tom recap again, just those four sort of key? I think it was right, the four key items, Tom, and what that revised fee schedule might look like?
Yeah, I can do that if you'd like.
I, I think that would be helpful. If others feel that would be helpful, just to, again, since we don't have it in writing before us tonight, just to go through that one more time.
Great. Okay, so we would, we would be eliminating the May, the prior, the, the before May thirty-first and the after May thirty-first. That's important to know, because typically that family of four pass, uh, back in February, you guys approved a hundred and forty-four dollar, a hundred and forty-five dollars pre-May thirty-first and two hundred dollars after May thirty-first. So, um, let's propose a hundred and twenty dollars for a family of four pass, sixty dollars down from eighty and a hundred and ten for an individual season pass, twenty dollars, um, down from twenty-five and thirty for a, an additional family member pass. That's, that's family number, family member number five, six, seven, whatever. Um, and forty dollars for a senior pass, um, at five dollars, uh, a daily admission. For our, that senior pass is the same as it was before, at five dollars, um, in admission, it, it's only eight or nine, um, it's eight times before you break even on that one. I didn't want to go lower than forty. We don't sell a whole, a whole lot of those and those people who do come tend to take, come way more often than, than what the pass, passes were. So, um, that's what we're proposing and yes, that's where I am. If you have any questions. I can give you a revenue number that I projected out based on that number if you'd like.
Sure.
Uh, it would be, uh, ninety-six thousand, twenty-four dollars before any concession revenue. So again, that gets us close to that, about little fifty or maybe a hair less than at, at the seventy-five percent return rate from last year, just for our residents. And there's no non-resident revenue in that total.
Okay. I wanted, I wanted to get feedback from others if, if others are comfortable with what I'm suggesting. Again, Tom, since this was dynamic and the numbers that you shared with us today are different than what's in the packet, and I completely understand why. Is the group comfortable with, again, you continue to move forward with your plans as if, as if you're reopening, but we'll formally approve the new fee schedule at our next meeting?
That's fine. What, what I think what I would do is I would freeze our season pass sales at this point. Um, so we don't continue to build up a, um, more that we'd have to refund to a lower amount. And then we'll just, um, let people know we're holding the sales, holding the sales off until we do basically a reopening of the season pass, uh, sales on, following the Board of Selectment meeting in a few weeks.
That sounds good.
Okay, folks are comfortable. Tom, thank you so much.
Great.
You're welcome. Thanks for, thank you for the time.
Thanks, Tom.
Good job, Tom.
Okay. Uh, I, item K is the Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposal. So, um, if we're comfortable, we would schedule a public hearing tonight. The, um, Neighborhood Assistance Act is available to tax exempt organizations. The program provides a tax credit to businesses that make cash investment in, uh, certain community programs, things like energy conservation, crime prevention and the like. Uh, the town's manager, the town manager's office has received one program proposal. Uh, it's from the Simsbury Grange and they're proposing an energy conservation project. And a public hearing is required before the Board of Selectmen can approve that application. Is there a motion effective May eleventh, twenty twenty to set a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposal submitted by the Simsbury Grange pursuant to the twenty twenty Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act for, uh, six PM on Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty? Does anyone move?
I'll move it.
And I heard Mike seconded it.
This is like Chris?
Uh, any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm looking at Jackie's face. I'm wondering if I mixed her up with Wendy again, but I don't know.
It's okay. It's okay.
Appointments and resignations. Uh, is there a motion effective May eleventh, twenty twenty to accept the resignation of Andrew Brazier as a regular member of the Board of Ethics retroactive to April one, twenty twenty?
Some move.
Second.
With our thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion effective May eleventh, twenty twenty to accept the resignation of Jim Fleming as a regular member of Police Commission retroactive to April twenty-second, twenty twenty?
Some moved.
Second.
Second, second with our thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review of the minutes from our last meeting on April twenty-seventh. Are there any changes? It looked good. Any selectmen liaison or subcommittee reports?
I, I have a quickie on the, um, Board of Ed. Where I wrote it down. Um, first of all, there's a facilities meeting on May twentieth, a virtual one. So we're moving to, um, new technology with that group. And, um, they're starting to look at curriculum. They're having a curriculum committee to start looking at the sixth grade where it should be. Uh, so they're moving forward on that and they're going to work with the Board of Finance to start doing some cost modeling from what I heard.
Right. Thanks, Wendy. Anybody else?
Eric, just a quick one. Sorry for the connection issues tonight. I don't know what's going on. Uh, from the public safety side, um, we've continued to have those weekly meetings. Um, thank you to, to Town Manager and, and Chris. Uh, Melissa and, uh, the other members of town staff, all the chiefs, uh, department heads, et cetera, for continuing to participate in those. Um, I know it's business as usual for you folks, as you're all professionals, uh, but for those of us um, on the volunteer and town side, we really do appreciate the professionalism that you guys are bringing to that and, and the information. And I know many, if not all, my fellow selectmen, you guys have been diving in and, and, um, asking questions or asking for, for different points. So, uh, I appreciate that. Wendy, you've had a bunch of good questions. You've asked me, able to bring that up, uh, during those meetings. So, um, thankful we can continue to have those because I find them, again, very useful and very informative. And, uh, the feedback we've gotten is, uh, has been good. So we're, um, Maria's proactively scheduled those, I believe, for the rest of the month. Uh, so that we can, uh, we can keep the information flowing. And then I think they'll be an important vehicle to, um, disseminating, um, in addition, obviously to this meeting, our reopening plans, et cetera. So.
Just a, a point, you know, ha- half of the value that comes from that meeting is, uh, how well it's run, Sean. So you do a great job.
You're very kind. I appreciate that, buddy. It's, uh, I get to do the easy part. I just call all the professionals names out and they, uh, they know all the good work they're doing.
It's not, it's not easy to organize. Come on. It's, it's, that's a value. You draw out the right questions and points and you add the right empathy at the right time. So, thank you.
Very kind. I appreciate that. You know, it's, um, as, as we see every week, I'm, I'm very humbled by the, 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 the folks that we have in leadership positions and all over this town. Um, no matter, this is my fourth, fifth crisis as a Board of Selectman member and varying hurricanes and floods and different things. And you guys, you guys, um, just take care of business and it's, it's, it's awesome to see. So appreciate the hard work.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So when we, um, wake up tomorrow morning, our town is going to be three hundred and fifty years old. Um, don't forget to have a piece of cake.
Almost as old as Mike.
Hey, 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 I resemble everybody.
That usually comes from me, man. Thank you for picking the bullet tonight.
I'm gonna have to get that stuff from my beard.
You're looking good, buddy. It's, it's nice to see you guys. I miss you guys and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, it's gonna be nice to get everybody back in the same room someday.
It will, will. All right. Stay well, everybody. Oh, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.